Well, good morning, everyone, and welcome. Today is Monday, October 30th, 2023. We are gathered for a work session, a morning work session regarding general and public improvement districts. This is to get an update and to look at our options for a real need in our county. My name is John Kafalas, Chair Pro Tem of the Board of County Commissioners. I'm joined in person by Kristin Stevens, Commissioner, and I believe Jody Shadak McNally from District Three is online. Is that correct, Commissioner?
Yes, my chair here, thank you, Commissioner Kafalas for running the meeting. I am calling in from, um, from, um, in transit, thank you.
Great, thank you. And of course, we are joined by our county manager, Loretta Volker. Loretta, is there anything you wish to say to sort of cue things up? And then I imagine we'll turn it over to our county engineering person, Director.
Yeah, I think this is a follow-up to a meeting we've had previously about what do we do about subdivision road maintenance and replacement? We know that we have quite a few roads out there. You all are getting calls on this from time to time. And so staff is here today to talk to you about options.
And, and I'll start. Frank Haug from the County Attorney's Office. I'm going to have folks here at the table go ahead and introduce themselves so that they all know. Do you want to start, Jason?
Jason Simmons with Hilltop Securities. We are the county's municipal advisor.
Dalton Kelly with Butler Snow. We serve as outside counsel to the county and been advising on this matter.
Kim Crawford from Butler Snow, same as Dalton.
Carol Block, County Finance Director.
Mark Peterson, Engineering Director.
Leslie Ellis, Community Planning, Infrastructure and Resources Director.
Wonderful, thank you for the introductions.
And, you know, there's sort of a couple of, of pieces to this. We have these folks here with us because some of this involves financing. They've helped us in the past with bonding and municipal bonds and things like that. And so that's why we've had them be, they've been very, very helpful throughout this entire process. And I think they'll be able to offer you some comments on some stuff we're going to talk about that we don't really specialize in in-house. And so it's useful to have them here. You know, it's a, it's a team effort and some of this information is going to be sort of a repeat for you, some of you probably. And so I apologize to the extent that a little bit of it's a repeat, but I want to make sure we're all using the same terminology and kind of on the same page. Originally, you know, this is one of our strategic goals, sort of an ongoing strategic goal, to try to figure out how to best address these subdivision roads. So that's part of the reason that we're here. The other reason is just that it's, it's coming up a lot and you're, you're getting calls from people in subdivisions that are having roads that are really deteriorating and in need of major replacement. And so we wanted to go through some of the sort of ways we can try to deal with this and some of the mechanisms we can use. Throughout this morning, you know, you have questions, obviously, feel free to interrupt us and ask whatever questions you'd like to. So one of the things we're trying to address is how do we deal with the existing subdivision roads that are in need of repair? There's a handful of them that are, you know, in pretty bad shape and are needing some repair. And so we want to talk about ways to deal with that. Another thing that we're trying to deal with is we have currently about sixty-five public improvement districts and local improvement districts in the county. That's a lot. And as you know, that the county, mostly through county staff, has to manage all of that. And so it takes a lot of time for the staff to keep track of all of those. There's board meetings that have to happen. There's lots of paper that goes back and forth. And so sixty-five of them ends up being a relatively large administrative cost. The other thing is just to talk about as new subdivisions come online, how do we set them up for success to make sure that, you know, thirty years down the road, they've got a plan, they're in a good position to rebuild their roads? And it doesn't involve kind of the problem we find ourselves in now in too many circumstances. So the other, you know, sort of broader questions that are involved in this is there's, you know, of course, a limited amount of resources to go around. So you're trying to figure out how do you allocate those? You know, you're trying to understand or, or best sort of divvy up the relationship amongst the developers, the homeowners in the county? And trying to place some of those burdens on the appropriate parties there. We want to try to find a way, I know this board wants to help, try to find a way to lower the cost on the property owners as much as possible? And to help them accomplish some of these goals for some of these roads. And then the other thing that's sort of interesting to all of this is because of, of Tabor and because of the requirements under the PID and LID statutes, there's elections that have to happen. And so part of this conversation today has to do with, you know, how do you get the community members involved? To what extent are they, they have an obligation, we have to involve them? How do you include people in certain taxing districts? How do you exclude people? So we're going to talk a little bit about that. You know, when you look at, and we've, I've talked to some of the other counties. I know my counterparts, Mark and Leslie and Carol, we've been working on this, talking to some other communities about how they do it. And there's sort of a spectrum of approaches that you can take. You know, one, one approach that you can take, and I know coming from Weld, where I used to work, that's more the approach they take over there is they just leave it up to the people in the subdivisions. And they have more of a private maintenance model where it's the internal subdivisions folks responsibility to figure it out for themselves. And the county doesn't really intervene. They rely on the private road associations, private homeowners associations to come up with the funding and, and the developers to put the roads in and then keep track of it. We here have more of this kind of middle hybrid approach where we don't really, when new subdivisions come in since nineteen ninety-four, we've said, we're not going to maintain your road, we're not going to replace your roads. And, but we have helped people form PIDs, we've helped people form LIDs. So we haven't taken it over entirely and just put them on the county road list and maintained them. But we've also said, well, we want to help a little bit. So we have this sort of in-between hybrid model. Another approach is just put them on the county road list and you just pay for it. You know, you could put those internal subdivision roads as added miles on the county road map and then you'd just be responsible for it. So that's kind of the other end of the spectrum. All right, the other.
So when you were, when you're asking other counties what they do beyond Weld County, what, what is the most common model? Is it this hybrid? Is it, I mean, and, and not all counties have as many road miles as we do and aren't as big as we are. So servicing, you know, the kind of, you know, how many of our square feet, square miles we are twelve hundred or something like that is, is, you know, is, is a lot more difficult than in a smaller county where they have fewer roads.
That's, that's right. Mark could talk more about probably the miles. My sense is that more of the counties fall on either far, one end of the farther spectrum. Some of them either just say, we're not dealing with it, it's a private issue. Some of them just take it over and maintain it. I think we're probably in the minority of people who try to have this middle ground area. But I, I don't know if Mark or anybody else wants to comment.
Would you like to add to that, please?
So your question was how many miles of road we have?
Um, I mean, yeah, that was tangentially my question. My initial question was just what, what, what do most counties do? And Frank was saying that they often fall into either privately maintain or county control and don't have necessarily this hybrid method like.
And that, that typically is the case. A lot of counties really struggle with what do you do with subdivision roads because nobody has enough money to really address all the needs that are out there unless they've got a dedicated sales tax or some other funding mechanism that's providing additional resources. Because most counties have minimized, or a lot of counties have minimized their road and bridge mill levy to help reduce shareback that goes to municipalities. Or there are counties that don't have the same shareback requirements because they're only dealing with one community. You know, Douglas County, for example, has a high road and bridge mill levy, but they're only providing money generally back to Castle Rock.
Gotcha, okay.
They're, as a county, they're operating more as a kind of a pseudo municipal services provider as well.
Sure, so there's more expected out of them. Okay, I just wondered if there was sort of a best practice out there or somebody who's figured this out? And it looks like it's either hands-on or hands-off in most cases.
Thank you, Commissioner. I, I have a follow-up and then we'll see before we proceed if Commissioner Shadak McNally has a question or a comment. But my follow-up, I think it was part of the questions that Commissioner Stevens was asking. And that is, do we have a good sense of the mileage, both gravel and paved roads? And then what the overall costs would be to, you know, take on a greater responsibility for the maintenance of those roads?
Um, I mean, we've got some of those numbers and that's a big part of what Eric and Katie and Amy have been compiling. The numbers are, they're, Eric just gave me these numbers. Actually, there's about eleven hundred subdivisions that are out there. Of those that would be eligible to be part of a PID program, that's around four hundred. And there's a couple hundred miles of asphalt and almost the same amount of gravel roads in those subdivisions. And right now, we've focused on the subdivisions that have an immediate need of reconstruction of their paved roads. And there are about twenty-four subdivisions that fall in that category. And just the need there for reconstruction is about twenty million dollars. So the, the biggest challenge is the roads that have deteriorated to the point where they're going to need very large capital expenditures to bring them up to a maintainable condition. So there's a, some very significant capital costs. And then you get into the, just the annual costs of routine and ongoing maintenance and the ability to save for that next overlay or chip seal that's going to occur down the road.
Thank you, Mark, that's very helpful. Commissioner Shadak McNally, is there, do you have a question or perhaps a comment?
Um, thank you, Commissioner Kafalas, there, Chair Pro Tem. I, I, Kristen asked my question and I just, it was answered for my, to answer, it answered my question. Now I want to just thank you all for being here. This is a very complex subject and I know we do things real different, so I appreciate us having a deep dive today. Thank you.
Appreciate that, please proceed, Frank.
And just to follow up a little bit, you know, like in Boulder County, for instance, they have more tax revenue. They have a county-wide increase on their mill levy, I think, right? To raise money for their roads. So that's another option you can talk about, but there, there are sort of a broad range of spectrums that you can deal with. Part of the, sorry, do you have, did?
No, I, I'll wait, I'll, I'll wait, please.
But, you know, part of the other issue, there's sort of two other issues here. One is the, there's a statute that requires the county to not spend general fund money on the road and bridge. And so that prevents or presents problems, that's the shareback that, that Mark was talking about, which is, which is limiting in a lot of ways to the county because we don't have an ability to sort of bring in excess funds into the road, road and bridge fund. And so there's a limitation there because we're obligated by statute to share our road and bridge monies with the municipalities. So we're going to talk a little bit about that. The other thing that is worth noting, and we've been talking about this a lot lately, is, you know, county roads are treated differently than municipal roads. Unlike a municipality where you've got dense population and a relatively defined set of roads, the county has road right-of-way all over the place. I mean, there's roads all over the county that are in varying stages from a two-track road all the way up to, you know, nice full-on paved roads. And as a result of that, the, the law around county roads is, is different because the legislature set it up to say, look, we understand counties have huge areas of basically sparsely populated land where there's not much tax revenue to get. And so unlike cities and unlike the state who have sort of more of a, of a liability and more of a funding, some funding abilities to draw from a broader tax base, more people, we don't have that, right? And so you have a smaller amount of people with a bigger amount of roads that also creates a little bit of a problem. So anyway, um, all right. So two of the ways that in the past that we've tried to sort of handle these, these things is through what are called local improvement districts. And then we'll talk about public improvement districts. This is a little bit of a refresher for you all. I know you, you've been through these hearings before, but just so you're, everybody's on the same page. A local improvement district's not a separate legal entity, it's a sort of a sub-part of the county. And it can be a non-contiguous area, but a local improvement district is not a taxing district. It's a special assessment district, meaning that you can go and you can say, we need to replace, you know, half a mile of this road. Or it could be used for a drainage structure or for other things like that. But the point is for a local improvement district, it's really not for maintenance, it's for a defined particular project. So you can do a local improvement district to raise money for a sort of a time-limited specific project, get the money. It's a special assessment, meaning that money goes as a special assessment on their tax bill, but it has to be attributable to them getting some particular benefit. So it's not just a general district tax. It's like saying, we're going to charge you thirty-five hundred dollars because of your frontage that you have on this particular road? And your share is thirty-five hundred dollars of this particular road project. And then once that project is over, it's over. You can form and you have formed local improvement districts through a resolution. You don't need a petition, you don't need an election. You, the board, can form a, a local improvement district of your own accord. If more than half of the people who would be subject to that assessment disagree with you, they have sort of a veto power. So you cannot form one if more than fifty percent of the people object to it.
If I may, just a quick question regarding the veto power. If I may, just a quick question regarding the veto power of the neighborhood residents. How is that determined that 50% of the people who live there don't agree with the board commissioner's decision to pass a resolution and establish an LID?
Under the LID statute, you have to have a public hearing. And prior to that public hearing, people are allowed to submit their objections. And so you would get either sort of notification from the neighbors through an email or some sort of written notification, or they could show up at the hearing also.
I don't mean to belabor it, but everyone who shows up at a hearing may be just a small group of people, not necessarily representative of half of the residents who live in the neighborhood. How do we address that?
Well, we'd have a list of who the properties were that would be included in the district and so we'd have to keep track of who was objecting to it.
All right. Thank you, Frank.
And just one clarifying point. Dalton Kelly with Butler Snow again. As far as the veto goes, that's through a petition. And so they would file a petition to veto their way out. So as Frank said, you notice the public hearing, but then they file a petition to veto it. And so that's how you know you have the property owners.
My question with the local improvement district is, it's designed for a specific, you know, project and not the maintenance, but most projects do need maintenance. So how does it work after that? I mean, is that something that, I mean, can you give an example? And does the county assume the maintenance piece? Or do then folks have some kind of general improvement district to provide for the maintenance of, or, so I guess that part's not clear to me. I can't think of one project that doesn't require maintenance down the road.
They've most commonly been used here at the county for water and wastewater projects. And so those then have a maintaining, you know, a district or they're part of a water district or something like that.
So someone else assumes the maintenance then?
Generally speaking, although if, based on our sort of regulations, if it's a neighborhood or a subdivision that was created prior to 1994 and they were to use a local improvement district to bring their roads up to standards, then they could qualify to receive county maintenance because, again, they were pre-1994. They would have to make that request to the Board of County Commissioners and you would have the ability to grant it or not grant it.
Gotcha, okay.
And, Mark, if I, could you quickly give the example that I'm most familiar with? The drainage issue that we dealt with off of Country Club Road? Could you offer that as an example that might be helpful?
Well, that was a kind of a really specialized, small local improvement district. We were dealing with groundwater coming to the surface, so we put a local improvement district that only covered five or six properties and they had a $15,000 assessment, you know, and they had to deal with that. We used a local improvement district to replace the Crown Point Bridge up the Pooter Canyon. That was about an $800,000 project and ended up being a $22,000 assessment to each of the properties in that district. And then the county is maintaining or doing limited maintenance on that bridge.
And part of what we're going to sort of discuss with you is the potential that you'd have a public improvement district set up and then also a local improvement district so that you'd have both. You'd have the PID to do the maintenance of the thing and then you'd have an LID to do the initial project construction. So that's one of the things we're going to sort of discuss. The other thing with the local improvements is, you know, you still have to get a table election if you're going to borrow money. And so there's the election part. Even if you formed the district, you could form the district without an election, but if you're going to borrow the money and increase indebtedness on behalf of the county or something, you could potentially have to have an election still. So the, a public improvement district can be used for ongoing maintenance. It is a separate district from the county, but you all as the board are what is called the ex officio board of the PID, meaning it still falls under your authority. So you still have the authority over the district. Again, they don't have to be contiguous. Neither an LID or a PID have to be all next to each other. They could, you could have a pocket over here and a pocket over here that don't touch each other. So there's no contiguity requirement. It can be formed through a petition. You all, the County Board of Commissioners, cannot form a PID by yourselves. You must get a petition from the property owners, which has to include at least 30% of the property owners or 200 of the electors from the district. So it's a harder burden to get to. Now, if you're dealing with a developer who's just one property owner before they divide up all of the lots, that makes it a lot simpler. And that's one of the mechanisms that we talk about using because you could, when it's at that initial stage of development, prior to all the lots being sold off, there's only one property owner instead of a whole bunch of different ones. And so you have an opportunity at that point to try to leverage some things. And on the bottom here, it says you can have, you can have an LID, so you could have an improvement district for a particular project, sort of inside of a public improvement district, which would be there for ongoing maintenance. So you could have both at the same time and use that as a mechanism to finance the ongoing maintenance. So anyway, just as a sort of comparison, LIDs are particular projects, they're special assessments, not taxes, and they're easier to form. The PIDs you can use for ongoing maintenance, they're a little harder to form, but they still, both of them, require quite a bit of county time to manage. And so, and we have quite a few of them. So that's just sort of the terminology and things. So I'm going to move now to the financing mechanisms, which is why mostly these folks can put some good comments, but I'll stop really quick.
Well, I think it would be an appropriate place to see if there are any other questions or comments. Commissioner Stevens, start with you, anything at this point?
No.
Okay. Commissioner Jody, Shattuck McNally?
Not this time, sir, thank you.
Miranda, do you have any insights or wisdom?
Not yet, thank you.
I'm hoping it'll come towards the end and I would submit, I bet we can all agree that this is an example of one of those wicked problems that are really difficult to solve.
It really is and it kind of comes down to just, there's only so much money to go around. And the projects cost a lot of money and it's hard to determine, you know, where you put some of those resources. And what we're hoping is at least to give the options to you all and as best as we can. Although there really is, other than we were sort of joking about if we win the Powerball and get millions and millions of dollars, there's not really a good solution. But, all right. So anyway, you know, we have in the past, there are times when there's a relatively small project that needs to be done, you know, a few tens of thousands of dollars. The county has some amount of money that it has for those sorts of projects, but it really is not much. It has to be a pretty minor project. And in those cases, sometimes the county is able to finance it upfront and then get it paid back over time, but that's pretty limited because we don't have a lot of excess money to do something like that. They can, the LIDs and the PIDs can go through a bonding process. They can go out to bond. And that's where, I'm going to run through this slide really quick and then I'll maybe turn it over to these folks to talk about some of these other things. But, so that's one option. There are times when you can get grants. Sometimes that happens. It's not super common, but it can happen. We can have, use these things called certificates of participation, which I'm going to let them talk about. We did do that, have done that in the past, but it's not a tool that we use very much. Other municipalities and other counties, I think, use it more regularly than we do. So that's something that we can talk about. The other thing just to keep in mind is that, you know, when you're going out to get a bond, there needs to be a significant amount of money involved. And so, you know, we've kind of got these projects that cost $20,000. The county might be able to put together $20,000 to help somebody. Then you've got huge major projects that might cost $10 million. Well, that's sort of a really major project, but what we find more often are they need a $300,000 bridge, or they need a $400,000 road overlay, or something like that. And so we're kind of in the middle. So anyway, with that said, I'm going to let these folks maybe explain a little bit better about what a certificate of participation is or how that would look.
So this is Kim. So certificates of participation are, our thought was, and again, this is why we're kind of just throwing it out there for you guys to decide what you want to do, but if the county would issue a certificate of participation, maybe on like some sort of annual-ish schedule and you have like a group of properties that you use as collateral, so you could have kind of a big project sum. And then you could dole that money out over a three-year period, which is what's required for federal tax purposes, for you to have a tax-exempt offering. So you could have a bunch of little projects, but if you had a reasonable expectation at the time that you issued the COPs, that you could spend it within three years, it could be tax exempt. So you could have a pot of money, you could do 300,000 here, 200,000 here, 100,000 here, 300,000 here. You could do that, but you'd have to know at the time of issuance, this is kind of what you were going to do. The rub to that is that all of these little districts are going to have to be formed and maybe with or without an election. So, so if you're going to do a public improvement district, as Frank talked about, the advantage to that is that they can impose a property tax for maintenance. It does need to be uniform within the general, within the district. So they can be non-contiguous, but as long as it's the same district, it has to impose the same levy rate for operations. The LIDs, that's not the case because it's the properties that are specially benefited. So the bigger GIDs could spin off a bunch of little LIDs, and Linda hates this idea, Carol hates this idea, so, I'm sorry. And, but that would allow the specially benefited properties to pay their share. This is probably what we, again, I think we thought was the most cost-effective in that the borrowing costs would be the least because the county is the borrower. You have a question?
I will, but I think I would prefer for you to finish your comments, your thoughts.
Okay, so the county would be the borrower. You'd do, you'd have intergovernmental agreements with each of the improvement districts. And then that would obligate them to pay over to you these special assessments. So they wouldn't, they wouldn't have to have an election to issue debt because the county would be issuing the not debt, which is COPs. They're not, it's annually appropriated, so it's not debt. So there wouldn't be an election except for the public improvement districts to actually form. It is complicated. But again, I think it may or may not be easier, and Carol can kind of discuss this, is how the county is going to manage it going forward. Because you have a bunch of, you already have a bunch of local improvement districts. And I will say that working with counties other than Larimer, you're probably the only ones who do it to this extent, to my knowledge. You've been very generous in your support of the different subdivisions and providing them with these types of options. A lot of the other counties are not.
And would it be beneficial, just taking a step back and talking about how a COP works? I feel like we kind of jumped in that, but I know you have some, but if that'd be beneficial, we can kind of talk through those mechanics a little bit.
I appreciate that offer, Dalton. I'll leave it up to my colleagues. I have a reasonable understanding about how COPs work. We certainly have, we're still, we're paying one off right now. But, and I think that, is it, what's your first name?
Kim.
Thank you. I believe you've answered some of my questions. I was, and maybe Carol can answer any subsequent questions. So what I'm understanding, if we issue COPs, it's based on using certain county assets for collateral. And I'm not sure, but I'm sure Carol knows how we would identify those properties and what makes sense to use as collateral. And then we, the county could borrow money and then, but there still would have to be PIDs either formed or willing to form through an election, and then that's how we would get paid back. Is that correct, Kim? Let's see if, and I, so I think I have a pretty good understanding, Dalton. Kristen or Commissioner Stevens, any questions, comments, observations at this point?
No, I don't think so. I don't need the, you know, I understand the COPs.
Okay, great. Let's continue, please.
Okay.
Thank you.
So the next slide is challenges. I guess it's, again, it's just defining what your risk tolerance is and what you want to do with these different subdivisions, you know, how much you want to get involved. There's a high administrative cost, and again, Carol can talk about that, but you are already maintaining a lot, a large number of these districts and it does take, they're included in your audits and you have to have, like you said, like Frank had said previously, there's got to be, you have to have a budget hearing and you have to set mill levies and you have to do all these things at least once a year. And it takes, and you act as the board, so you usually do it at your commissioner meetings, but you do, but it is a separate political subdivision for the public improvement districts and you have to act as a separate board. The one advantage, and we have one city client that does this, whose new subdivisions, is they require any new developer subdivision to join the existing public improvement district. So you have a big public improvement district. If a subdivision wants to come up and get, you know, start developing, if they're asking things from you, you can require that they join this improvement district so that they are covered by at least the mill levy. And then, so you can, you can make them at that time suck into the new district. But the issues would be for the already existing districts and what to do with them.
The already existing what?
Districts, like LIDs and PID, the existing ones. You can't make them come in. But I think those are some of the challenges. And then the next slide is future subdivision roads, and that probably goes back. Unless you have further questions about just the different financing. You don't have to do it with a COP. You could continue to do what you've been doing and just do public improvement districts or local improvement districts. Our goal, when we started talking to the county and to Carol, was to try to minimize the number of those additional districts that you'd have to organize, to try to eliminate some of the staff time and the county time that is needed to do that. But you could continue on the same path that you've been on and continue with those, or you could also always decide to do nothing or let the subdivisions handle them themselves.
Thank you, Kim. You've offered that if we have any questions at this point. Kristen, anything? I have a couple, I think, quick ones, but anything you want to offer, Commissioner Stevens?
Not yet.
And Commissioner Shattuck McNally, Jody?
No, thank you.
And I'll offer my two questions. One is, what you described, thank you, Kim, what you described about perhaps requiring developers to, especially when there's only, they haven't given out the lots yet, to be part of a PID. How does that work when it seems like more and more subdivisions are being built? Maybe this is in the municipal, as metro districts. And aren't metro districts supposed to, in theory, they assess quite a significant mill levy and they're supposed to do the infrastructure and then I believe maintain the infrastructure. So my first question is, what you described, how does it fit into what we're seeing regarding metro districts as a tool, a financing tool to do the public infrastructure and ongoing maintenance?
So, funny you should ask. Metropolitan districts are, they're essentially their own separate political subdivision. So they would be providing operation and maintenance and they would be providing the public infrastructure. So they have their own elections. And again, I think it would be the same five, you know, five people voting or whatever when they, when they form the subdivision. But if there's a metropolitan district, I don't think there would be a need for the county to get involved. They, on their own, can also form, a metro district can form a public improvement district and it can also form a local improvement district. They call them, they're different names for them, but they can form those sub-districts too. I don't think the county would need to be involved because they should be providing their own. And when you approve service plans, you can require that if you want to in your service plans. You know, they come to you for service plan approval.
And Commissioner, like the way it operates is, as Kim's saying, it's really getting at the same issue. I think it's a matter of control and how you're getting there. If you form a metro district, they have the same types of tools available as a public improvement district and they're levying taxes ultimately to construct and then to maintain. The difference with doing a public improvement district is you would still have a designated taxing district that's paying for the roads and basically growth paying its own way. You're having that district paying for the improvements and ultimately a source of revenue that's going to maintain those roads. The difference between doing a PID is the county is in control. The difference between doing a PID is the county is in control, you're setting the mill levies, you're the ones that's ultimately doing the funding. And that gives us the tools available to do, you know, if we wanted to package some of these for certificates of participation to try to be more efficient. That gives us a little bit more of the tools there. Another way of going about it would be, we prefer metro districts and you're going to, you're your own subdivision, you're going to be your own political subdivision and, and they have the same tools to do it. But it's kind of two ways of getting at the same, same idea, same place.
Thank you, Dalton and Kim. So what we're discussing would not, would not apply to already established metro districts or ones that are, are being considered to be formed. And we can have a whole nother conversation about what are the necessary additional reforms regarding metro districts, but we won't have that conversation today.
Do we have four hours?
And maybe after I ask my second question, I'd like to do a time check with Frank to make sure we're okay with, I think we're up till 11:30. But my second question is this, we, like the second bullet point on the previous slide, challenges. PIDs and LIDs create high county administrative costs and burden. I'm very mindful that we have extraordinary, at least one staff member who manages a lot of these PIDs and LIDs. But I thought when we, we actually put in there a percentage that the county takes for administrative costs, is that not keeping up with the, the, the volume? Or, or is that something we, if we continue down the path of perhaps encouraging or using this as one solution with PIDs and LIDs to do the maintenance, you know, should we be changing that formula in terms of covering administrative costs? Or perhaps bringing on another person to help with this work?
So right now, the engineering department receives 5% of administrative costs in terms of the revenue that public improvement districts bring to the county or assess or levy against their property owners. So, you know, when you take 5% of a million dollars, that's not a huge amount of money, or a million five. So you have given us additional staff resources, you know, because this was a strategic objective. And so we have brought additional staff on board to help deal with the districts. I think our main point here is that if we project outwards and use this same model to try to double or triple the number of public improvement districts, that's really not very scalable because we're dealing with three-member advisory boards right now for every district. You know, we're, we're in there appointing, you're helping to appoint, you know, close to 200 people to serve on the existing boards that we have. So there's that burden and, and challenge. And then when it comes to just contracting for services, you know, Katie spends a large amount of time every fall finding snowplow contractors for all the mountain subdivisions that we provide. They're, they're largely gravel roads and so one of the services we provide is snowplow work in the winter. And it's really hard and time-consuming to find people to take on those contracts. So that's just, those are examples of kind of the process we go through.
Thank you, that's helpful. Let's continue. Oh, yes, Commissioner, I'm sorry.
Yeah, so I think the future subdivisions is the easiest question to answer here because I do think we should require them to form their own road districts. I mean, I think we can't have this, let's not compound the problem that we already have. That's a way to deal with it and not have to deal with it again. So I, I would be in favor of, of doing that. I think that the, the existing is a trickier situation, but I think that this is a really easy fix going forward for future subdivisions. We probably should have thought of it sooner.
Could I make one comment on that, Commissioner? So I think the, the difference is if you've got a, if we call it a master public improvement district that somebody can join, that's more easily done. The only district that we've ever had that formed in a new subdivision and they have their own district occurred because again, the timing was right because we had one developer and they could form the district at election in November when there was only one property owner. Otherwise, you're constraining their ability to sell lots or bring people in. So the timing has to work if you're out to create a new district just for a given subdivision.
And did it ever, may or may not, want to form a metropolitan district?
Oh, I guess I didn't mean a district, I meant the Home and Road Association.
Oh, just Road Association.
Yeah, I mean, sorry, I, I used the wrong terminology. But I mean, I think that, yeah, I don't want to do something that requires a vote or that complicates things. But if they are required to form a Home and Road Association, that, that takes a burden off our staff altogether. So I think that that seems like a good way to go forward.
And that I believe has been part of our development agreements. The, the challenges we run into there are the homeowners' associations don't do a good job, or they change their assessment, or they don't have enough money, or they find themselves needing to manage a pretty significant project and it sort of falls by the wayside, or they don't have the resources to do what needs to be done when the time comes.
I think that there just needs to be a lot of communication and education about, you know, I mean, living in the county is different than living in a municipality with regard to the kind of road servicing that you're going to get. And so I think that there are a lot of people that move from municipalities into the county who have different kinds of expectations. But I think, I think setting the expectations initially is really important. And, you know, I, I think that the developers largely, you know, responsible and, and real estate agents are, should be responsible for doing that. I don't know that they always do that in their desire to sell these properties. But I also know that it, it's not, it's not a tenable place for us to, to keep kind of doing what we're doing. And so I, to me, it seems like, you know, the developer and those folks need to take some responsibility. And then the homeowners themselves need to understand that part of buying here is, is maintaining this road.
And in the, in the sort of scenario you're talking about, they have their own legal remedies. You know, it's like any HOA fee, you know, you're supposed to pay your road dues. If you don't pay your dues, then the HOA has the ability to go into your property, put liens on your property. They have private enforcement mechanisms against sort of people who aren't doing what they're supposed to do within their associations. And we have been, you know, the sort of timeline, as I understand it, is up until 94, we kind of had one way we dealt with this problem. And then in 94, we said, we're not rebuilding your roads anymore. The timing of that is such that it's now 30 years after 1994, which is about the lifespan of a road. And so now this problem is coming up a bunch because we, we're kind of hitting that space, so.
Could I just clarify one thing? Even pre-1994, the county didn't come in and pay for an overlay. We only did routine surface maintenance. So even then, it was still up to the property owners to pay for road rehabilitation, reconstruction, or an overlay.
And, and we can make the people, when they're building out the new subdivisions, this came up recently with the one on 57th and Loveland, where there was two subdivisions, one in a PID on one side and one that had an HOA on the other side. And, you know, what's nice is when you only have one developer who's the one property owner, you can tell them, you either figure it out before we're going to process this plat and get everything done. So you have a good enforcement mechanism at that point. You know, once you've got a bunch of sold-off lots, the problem is you really have to have an election. You can't, there's no mechanism to force somebody into a PID once they've got those lots all sold off. And so it becomes problematic because you can include yourself. So if I was on a piece of property adjacent to an LID on a road, I could say, I want to be a part of that. And I can go through a petition process to get included, but that's one property owner. Each property owner has to separately include or exclude themselves. There's no way to do sort of an omnibus inclusion of a bunch of properties into a PID or an LID.
So thank you. I'd like to suggest that we pick up the pace a little bit with the presentation. And I suspect we'll have very robust conversation at the end. I'd like to leave time for that.
So the, so we have these existing subdivisions, we've talked about that already. You know, some of what you're able to do here, you can't really change the cost that it takes to build the road. The road's going to cost whatever it takes to build the road. You can minimize the payments by extending the timeframes. You can use the certificates of participation, which allow for a way sort of to get funding without having to go through a Tabor election. So there are mechanisms you can use to try to either spread out the costs or maybe minimize some of the interest in things. But the problem is you've still got to come up with the money. We had discussed, part of this whole conversation were these ideas of what are called master PIDs. And so the idea would be that you'd have one big PID. Again, they don't have to be contiguous. You could have a subdivision in the north side of the county and one in the south side, wherever you wanted them to be. And you could set it up and say, okay, well, a gravel road costs X amount of money to maintain. And so we're going to set a mill levy that's sufficient to cover that kind of a road. And so then you could say, anybody that comes into the county that's going to have a subdivision on that kind of a road, a gravel road, has to join this master PID that's already got the mill levy set. And then you'd have that maintenance ability over a period of time to, you'd have that revenue from that mill levy. And so you'd have to have, you know, two or three categories, one for gravel roads, one for paved roads, you know, and you'd have to kind of break that out. The benefit would be that you'd have, that it would already be set, the mill levy would already be set. And then people would include themselves into it as new developments came online. Or even existing ones could include themselves in it through an inclusion process. And so it would, it would minimize the administrative costs because you could take several, what would otherwise be several PIDs, group them together into this sort of master PID with a similar need. So that's an idea. The, the problem with this idea is you still have to have a public hearing anytime anybody wants to include or exclude themselves. And like I said, you can't force a whole bunch of properties into it. Once it's made, if, if there's multiple property owners, each property owner has to be willing to be included. And so if you've got a split where half of the neighborhood wants to join it and half of them doesn't, then the half that want to join could join, but the other half don't have to. And so that's sort of the, the problem with it. So have just a couple more slides. So there's some usefulness, mostly the inclusion is problematic for the master PIDs. The certificates of participation we talked about, it's sort of a mechanism to, to help. You know, one of the things this board wanted to talk about was especially when you have a neighborhood that has a lower tax base or there's not as much money to draw from, how do you help folks in those situations? Because it's, you know, it's one thing if you've got a million and a half dollar house to assess $5,000. It's another when you've got a $300,000 house. And so I'll, I don't know that there are any $300,000 houses anymore. But anyway, it's just, depends on the area. You, and you could potentially bundle those, which would make it better. Some of this may be legislative potential solutions where we could try to get some sort of legislation that has to do with allowing sort of an omnibus forced inclusion into one of these master PIDs. So you could force a whole neighborhood to join a larger PID rather than this one-off inclusion process. So that might be one thing we could do. You could also look at, you know, again, a lot of this comes back to the Road and Bridge Fund and our, our limitations on being able to fund the Road and Bridge Fund. We have only certain places we can get that money. And so that's a whole broader conversation that would cause a lot of interested parties to have a lot of strong feelings probably. But that's certainly something we can talk about. And then, you know, I think Commissioner Stevens is right, you know, the simplest one is the new ones that are coming online. You just tell them, form your own association, it's privately responsible for managing it, and then you all take care of it. And then, you know, when they come back 30 years down the road, and like Mark said, kind of didn't maybe plan it out as well as they did, should have. You know, to, to just put it back onto them and say, well, this is your responsibility, you have an association, you need to take care of it. For the existing ones, you know, maybe a solution is to try to pool them into these master PIDs and LIDs so that we don't have as many and it lowers the cost a little bit. And that would be helpful. And then the other potential is these certificates of participation that we could potentially use. So that's, that's, that's it, I'm done.
Well, and Frank, the one other one you had listed up there that we didn't touch, and this is what a couple of counties do that we've also discussed, is there's also, you could just do a Tabor election for countywide sales tax or countywide financing and you could go at it that way as well, as far as looking at a, a new funding stream. And so just wanted to make sure we put that option out there as well.
That's, that's I think Boulder, right?
So thank you very much, Frank, and I certainly did not mean to rush you along. But I guess we are where we are, which gives us a good 30 minutes plus for conversation, questions. I, I would, I'll start with Commissioner Stevens. Questions, comments, insights, please?
Sure. Well, I'm, I'm not really in favor of, of a tax that, a countywide tax. Commissioner Shadak McNally, I think, might need to mute.
Yeah, Jody, it, it looks like there's some background noise from where you are. If you could mute when you're not speaking, that would be helpful, thank you.
Thanks, Commissioner. So, well, not a ton of good options. But I appreciate options, so I, thank you for, for kind of looking into this. I mean, I, I think a countywide tax that was helping with private subdivisions is not really a great option here. So I think there's a lot of people that wouldn't be in favor of that because I, I just don't see that there, there'd be a lot of appetite for that. So I don't know that that's a great option in my book. I do think that with the existing subdivisions, like I said, you know, yes, have them form their own road maintenance. You're right, we may come to the same situation in 30 years where they're, but then I think at least we had been honest from the beginning and said, you're responsible for this. So, you know, if you're not collecting enough dollars, here's the other mechanism you can use. I mean, I, I do think that the public improvement districts, it, it seems like they, they are taking staff time and they're unwieldy. And I don't know that we could get the remaining 400 subdivisions into them. And if we did, I don't know that we could, would have the staff capacity. So I think, you know, trying to explore some kind of master, you know, PIDs, I mean, is, is an interesting concept. And, and using COPs, you know, to maybe offset some of the costs that, that we're facing. You know, I, I do struggle with the idea of sort of either forcing people to be in something or, you know, I, I think that there's still folks that, that, that are in, that have, that own property but have some real constraints on their income. And I do think that that becomes some of the problem of, you know, kind of bringing everyone into something, whether they like it or not. So, so I'm, I'm a bit struggling with that. And, and I don't know that even if we wanted to, we would get all 400 of those folks into a public improvement district. We've seen a lot of those, which, now I'm getting confused, public improvement district, right, is the? We've seen a lot of people reject them. A lot of community, a lot of neighborhoods reject them. And I guess there is how much responsibility we have if your road is sort of failing. I mean, is it, you know, is it our responsibility when we've said we're not going to do it to still figure out a solution? I mean, I, I don't, you know, I don't, I don't know, is there any risk involved, like from a insurance or other policies? I mean, that would be a legal question, I guess.
Yeah, and that's something that's come up a lot lately. And, you know, part, part of the answer to that is that we do think there's some sort of minimal obligation to try. The problem is there's just only so much money to go around. And at the end of the day, there's not a, you know, an unlimited amount of money. And, and the law and the statutes and stuff talks about the fact that, well, that's why earlier in this conversation, I'd said the law treats counties differently than cities. The law understands that counties can't pave and maintain thousands of miles of road all through the unincorporated part of the county. all through the unincorporated part of the county. And so while, while we do try the best we can, you know, there was a case out of Boulder County where a subdivision essentially came to the county commissioners and said, you guys need to fix our road. And the county commissioner said, well, we aren't going to. And they sued about it. And the court essentially said, there's a limited amount of money to go around. And, you know, you can't force the county commissioners to put you at the top of the pile. That's why you have elected officials is to determine how the money gets allocated. So I'm not as concerned about the liability piece because it's just a call about who gets, where the funding goes and how the maintain, you know, which roads get maintained in which priority.
And I think, Mark, so you said there's, you feel like there's about $20 million worth of need in these subdivisions? Is that?
Well, that was just to deal with some of the most immediate needs. When we've made estimates, and these go back a few years, so the number's not going to be accurate anymore. But when we had looked at just maintain subdivision roads, that was like $3 to $5 million a year. And right now, we're only putting $5 million a year into capital improvements for our entire thousand-mile mainline county road system. So you'd have the cost to operate and maintain all the subdivision roads in the $3 to $5 million range, but that is assuming they're all to a maintainable condition. So you've got millions of dollars of capital needs on those subdivision roads.
And that doesn't, you know, and we also have needs for regional roads and, and roads that connect our communities. And, I mean, that's where I think voters might be more interested in, you know, in a tax that addresses some of those roads that every, that many people drive on versus roads that, you know, a handful of people drive on. So that's, that's why I'm saying I don't think a tax. I mean, I guess, maybe I should just stop talking because I don't really have a good answer here. But I, because I don't think that there, and there's not an easy answer, and so I do need to think about this, this a bit. But I will say that I don't, I, I like some sort of hybrid model because I do feel like it's, we're not saying, well, you figure that out yourselves. We're saying, gosh, we know this is a problem, and this is how we can help, but keeping that help limited. And so if that, um, yeah, that, that's, that's the only thing that I, I feel fairly strongly about is not just, you know, leaving it, leaving everyone to their own devices, because I think that there's, there's some role for the county to play here. I just don't want it to be maintaining every single road and every single subdivision.
Thank you, Kristin. Jody, do you, would you like to ask some questions or offer some comments before I offer my insights and my questions?
Yes, I would, sir. Thank you very much. Apologize for being off mute. I'm trying to get in the car to go. So I, most of my comments reflect things that Commissioner Stevens had already mentioned. I think, you know, that we have a lot bigger group to wrangle trying to get them into, into something or at least getting aware of the issue. I think she's, she's spot on. Any future development, we should make sure they understand the conditions and, and set those so that they are setting up appropriate structures to take care of their road maintenance going forward. And the rest of this, I'm, I'm just still digesting and reflecting. This is a pretty large, what I'm quote-unquote with problem as was stated before. And obviously, with that large of a, um, millions and millions of dollars of issues to kind of get up just for, up to where we'd like to have road standards, especially the immediate needs, I think prioritization is going to be really important. And I'm still kind of reflecting on the rest of this, but it's nice to know about these other options. And I'm grateful that Frank has let us know liability-wise where our response and accountability and obligations are. But then, when it comes down to it, as someone who lives in unincorporated Lamar County, and you drive on roads and you go throughout different neighborhoods, whether you're walking, running, or driving, you just know certain neighborhoods collaborate and partner together, and maybe others have, older, long-term neighborhoods have longer histories and stories to tell. So I think I will have probably more questions once I kind of review my notes. And I think I might end up watching this presentation again when I, when I'm able to. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. I reckon it's my turn. And I'm hoping at some point to hear from our finance director and that gentleman on the right. What's your first name again? Jason?
Yes, Jason Simmons, Haltob.
Because I'm really hoping that you folks have some real fabulous wisdom here. But with all that said, here are my couple of thoughts and I think a couple of questions that I think are helpful to the conversation. First of all, and I think we've spoken to this, I think it's important to consider this, you know, moving forward, the future. And I, I tend to agree with what I heard Kristin say about, you know, being as proactive as we can be. And some level of requirements that if you're going to do subdivisions, you've got to commit to, you know, making sure you're fixing and maintaining your roads. So I think it's important to look at what we can do moving forward, and that's one piece of it. I have a couple of other thoughts. And then what our current situation is with regard to the menagerie of, of PIDs, LIDs that we have. And in particular, what you said earlier, sir, about, we have about 1,100 subdivisions, 400 that might qualify for PIDs, 24 that are pretty bad shape. And, and there may be some logic in prioritizing currently what we can do about addressing those, those 24 subdivisions. And it, to me, and I thought you said the cost might, there might be about $20 million. And to me, that raises the question of, could COPs be used for something like that? And maybe that's a question you might want to speak to. Regarding, so that, those are some jumbled-up thoughts. Regarding master PIDs, and that's one idea for, for moving forward, a question I have there is, I seem to recall Boulder County did, made some effort to create like a countywide PID. If I'm remembering right, I thought there were some legal challenges. And is what Boulder, if that's correct, is what Boulder County attempted to do different than the idea of a, quote, master PIDs based on road categories and all that kind of stuff? That's a question for you.
Yeah, thank you, Commissioner. So the Boulder County one was a master LID rather than a PID. And so they, they did run a big PID, and that election question failed. And after the election question failed, they formed a big LID. And the issue there was part of what they were trying to do with the special assessments is do maintenance and some other, there were some roads included that weren't Boulder County roads, but the big thing was maintenance. And really, special assessments have to go towards special benefit. And so they were not just trying to use the special assessments for the internal roads for that subdivision. It was regional roads, and there was this question of special benefit. Ultimately, the district court said, you exceeded your jurisdiction, you went beyond that. What we'd be looking at here, a little different, with a PID being a little different, is the difference between a tax and a special assessment. Special assessment can only be charged in the amount and to the extent that you get a special benefit. As we all know, with taxes, it's a, it's a charge for general government service, and it has to be uniform. But ultimately, it's for general government service. And so even though my house might not get the exact value of my tax paid, that's okay with the tax. And so the idea would be to take these existing PIDs, as far as the master one goes, and really have an organizational process that's more similar to how you would do one originally than this one-off petition process. And so it would be more of an election. It'd be, you know, if 75% of the, the current PID agrees with this idea, that last 25% is not going to keep us out. And that would be the idea of changing the laws so that you could do these master ones. But the difference in the legal issue being, it would be a tax rather than a fee or a special assessment, and so that should resolve that issue.
And it would still have to be voted. So whoever's going to be in the proposed district would vote to become, which is what Boulder did, but the voters did not approve it.
So on, on that point, Kim, there would need to be an election, and that election would apply to only those homeowners that reside in the proposed master PID, whether they live along gravel roads in the country or paved roads. Is that correct?
Right. You would set boundaries for whatever the master, and, and as we talked about, there'd probably be three-ish because there'd need to be different levels of, of maintenance. So each proposed public improvement district would have boundaries, and the people residing within those boundaries would, would vote.
And how would we address, you know, some subdivisions or areas, the road conditions are much poorer than others? How would there be some, you know, wouldn't people complain that I'm paying a higher mill levy to fix somebody's roads that are a lot worse than ours? How do we address that?
I think what they would, the intent would be to group them into similarly situated roads. So all the gravel roads would be in one, all the different, you know, the higher maintenance or the more, more needy would be in a different district. And their, their rates, their mill levy rates would be higher than the ones that would be lower.
Commissioner, a couple more questions, is that all right? I'd like to hear from Lorenda and anyone else. What about on the master PID thing, concept? We'd have to get permission to establish a mill levy, and that would have to be approved by the voters. How does that, how does that align with the current statute that says if you do a mill levy for road and bridge, there's a cost share, and you have to give share back to the municipalities? Would, would that apply, or that's a different animal?
No, I.
I'm sorry.
I think if you're forming the PID or the LID, then they're, they're basically funding their own road. It's just a mechanism of spreading out the costs to them, but because it's their money, I don't think the shareback would apply. It would just be their, because it's their money.
Right.
Yeah, I, I agree with you, Frank. I think the difference is the county road and bridge mill levy is what's subject to the shareback. A mill levy imposed by a PID is not the county's road and bridge mill levy. And so that's, that's where this idea gets attractive, especially if you have an existing PID. And we've looked at this more from the maintenance perspective, but if you have an existing PID that's already authorized five mills, and then we're just joining people into that, we only, under, under the pitch to do master PIDs, you'd need the election to join, but the mill levy's already authorized. And, and so that, that could cut down on one of the steps. Ultimately, you know, they're going to vote to join based on agreeing with that mill levy. That'll be part of the calculus, of course. But I think one of the benefits is it's not your road and bridge mill levy, and so we're talking about a different pot of money. We're talking about a different entity in general.
Yeah, thank you. That, that's helpful. I'll, I'll just offer one or two more questions and then see if other folks want to weigh in. One is, but I think I understand that the, the existing 65 or whatever it is, PIDs, could fold into this master PID. I think I understood that, but somebody could tell me if I'm not understanding that. So that's one question. And it seems like this would be a pretty heavy lift to sell to folks, but it's, it's, I, I would think we should keep this in the mix of options moving forward. I, I think we have to do something different than what we have been doing. And with population growth and everything else, it's just not sustainable. So I'll offer that, and I'll make one comment, and then I'll ask a question about COPs, so Carol can weigh in if she wants to. And I also think it's important to look at these issues through a, quote, equity lens. And, and as, as has been discussed and alluded to, you know, you have neighborhoods where folks don't have the million-dollar homes, and, and, you know, a couple of mills is a big deal, or, or if you assess something against their property. So that, it, that's important to keep in mind, the equity lens of all of this. And then my question, could we use COPs to cover the cost of 20 million bucks to fix the 24 subdivisions that are, you know, that are perhaps most in need? I don't know who wants to answer.
So I'll, I'll address the first. With existing PIDs joining a master.
Thank you.
That's where we're going to need state law to be changed.
Okay, that's right. That's.
Because you, that's where you have to petition in, and it has to be 100% of the property owners. So maybe five property owners want to come in and they can join, but then everybody benefits. And so why would you want to join if you're going to benefit?
Thank you for the clarification. I would be in favor of exploring that with our legislators, but that's not something that, it's complicated. So therefore, it's not something in my mind, if, if you want to be thoughtful about policy, which in theory, that's how we're supposed to be, it, I don't think we could figure that out between now and the start of the next session. So we're looking at perhaps a legislative solution on the policy side for one after 2025. But I, I think that should, in my opinion, that should be in the mix to figure out, how do we make it easier to join into a, a thing? Thank you.
And then I think the second question, maybe the second question, with the COPs for 20 million, the county could certainly issue certificates of participation for the 20 million and not even form GID, PIDs or LIDs. You, you could, but you'd have to pay for it with your own money. I mean, it would be a county, you, you wouldn't have a source of revenue to, to come back on. It would just be any available county revenue for the COPs, like, like your existing, your existing COP. You just pay for it with available revenue. So that would be, you, you could do it that way.
So if we were, last point, if we were to consider that as a way of addressing that $20 million cost for those 20 subdivisions, 24 subdivisions where the roads are in pretty bad shape, they would have to, if we want them to pay it back, they would have to, yeah.
They'd have to do a local improvement district or something.
Like, like what we do now, where petition and certain percentage, and then the commissioners refer to the ballot, et cetera. Okay.
Wouldn't have to go to the ballot, though, right? For a local improvement district?
Only if there was debt. So if the local improvement district issued debt, it would go to the ballot?
Right.
But if the county did COPs, it would not need to do that.
Right.
And if I may, we, we've worked with a couple clients that have issued COPs for road projects, everything from the state of Colorado down to the city of Aurora. So it's definitely something that's done. And, you know, the, the thought process here is figuring out a way for the county to get repaid back for those revenues that would be used to pay those COPs. With the other situations, like city of Aurora was just essentially paying it from any legally available revenues, such as what most COPs are, you know, all paid from just kind of general operating revenues of that entity. This whole thought process is trying to find a way for the county to be able to essentially get reimbursed for those COP expenditures.
Thank you, Jason. And, and of course, there is definitely a level of risk if the county's involved with regard to COPs. I'll, I'll pause because I've taken up too much time. Commissioner Stevens, anything else at this moment? And then Jody, and then we'll see if Lorenda has anything.
Yeah, I mean, I think that the master PID idea has some merit, and we might want to look at, at that just because it does, it is a way to sort of combine some of these like areas and these like communities and not create so many small little districts, which, I, I mean, I feel like as, as we were talking, I got three or four emails about people who had applied that we have to interview to, to be on the board. So, I mean, I, I do understand that, and it, I don't know if that was just, that was really interesting timing, or somebody was really trying to send a message, but, but I do understand that, you know, they require staff time, you know, on, you know, our staff, our time, you know, our administrative, your, your staff's time. So to create dozens and dozens more of these doesn't necessarily make sense, and I think that, that, that master PID plan has some value. You know, I don't know how I feel about, I do think that there are some equity issues, and I guess I'd like to think more about how to address that. COPs, where we're not getting money back and we're just providing that outlay. And the only, the only thing I have, the only problem I have with that is a bit of a fairness issue of the people that have already, you know, really created PIDs and are addressing their issues, that the county swoops in and fixes other people's issues, and they didn't have that same burden. And so I do feel like a way to, for those, those neighborhoods to pay back, unless there's some real financial hardship that, that, you know, we can make the case for, some equity cases, I don't necessarily want that to be a policy because I think we would hear from other neighborhoods that said, why didn't they have the burden of, of doing all the work that we have done? And then, so that, that's my, my feeling about that. So, yeah, I think I have to think about this a little bit more, but I, I do appreciate having options. Obviously, there's not one really great solution that, that fixes all these problems, but at least I think that we have some things to think about here, and I don't, I'm not ready to make any decisions yet, but I certainly appreciate the information.
Thank you. Thanks, Commissioner. Commissioner Shadak McNally, do you have any questions or comments at this point?
Thank you, Commissioner Kupfalos. Again, Commissioner Stevens is pretty much stating what I've been thinking about, fairness issue, the equity issue. And I figure there's ways that we can plan and get some things in place for future growth and future divisions. And I'm glad to know of all these different options. And like I said before, I think I have a lot to digest and think about here, but I do want to make this priority. We've been talking about this, and we know the need is growing, and the roads are, some of these roads are still deteriorating, so I know we have things that we need to address sooner and later. So I don't want to push this off for too long. I feel like we need to maybe have some serious conversations to address this sooner than later. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Commissioner. Let's see. Loretta, would you like to weigh in with any questions or comments? And then I, I'm afraid I have a few other questions or thoughts.
I do have a couple. So you talked about Boulder County.
Could you speak closer to you?
Sure. You talked about Boulder County having a failed election for a PID, and then they instituted an LID. And it sounded like the problem with that was that they tried to assess a maintenance fee along with it. I guess I'm wondering, just, just logistically, could we form an LID countywide that would be used and only to benefit a neighborhood or a road? Or if that's an assessment, that feels different than a PID, as long as everyone who's being assessed has a benefit of that project? And I understand, following a public hearing process, if more than half the neighborhood said they didn't want to do it, it would, the assessment wouldn't go through. Is that, is that a potential option? I wasn't clear how we left it with the Boulder County example.
Yeah, so the thing with the LID is, you could form a very large LID where the assessments go down and who actually gets charged it. Unlike a tax, it doesn't have to be uniform. And so I think what it would come down to is you would have one large LID, but as far as who's getting assessed and for which roads, it does come down to that analysis. You, I mean, the county's done it before. You put on evidence for those properties, and so it is possible to do a large LID. I think where Boulder County really ran into trouble is what they were trying to put into that assessment, really it needs to be for construction. And so that's one of the issues with the LID is it wouldn't be maybe the fit for all of our problems, especially the maintenance one. But as far as cutting down administration, I think we could put them into a large LID, the challenge being organization, potential veto, problems like that. If we're not running a debt election and we're doing something with a COP, and we're just getting paid back from the special assessments, maybe that's a way to cut down administration on having one large LID. But ultimately, the work that goes into it and what we can charge the assessments for is very individualized, and it does require that work.
And is it possible to require that the HOA or whatever the organization is, in exchange for having the, the road paved through an assessment, to require maintenance to be done? So is it possible to put a hook onto that where maintenance is required but not at the county's expense?
I would defer to, to your team as far as what you can require through the maintenance there, but I do think, you know, before you give somebody the LID or you're willing to issue a COP for them, you can say, look, we're not going to do this until you step up and agree to do this on the back end. I think, I think that is one of, one of your benefits, but as far as what tools you have and what hooks, I would, I would defer to Frank on your team.
That's where, I mean, you, when you want to capture development, you really got to do it when they come in to do the developing, because then after that, and the lots are all sold off, you don't have the hook that you do with a developer. You can hold up the plat, you can hold up their collateral for the development agreement. Once it's all separated, you'd really, I think, you wouldn't have a land use way to enforce it, you'd have to do it through the financing and say, we're not going to help you in this process. So you could still do it, but it wouldn't be a land use enforcement mechanism, it'd be a financing enforcement.
Statutorily, can we do that now, require a developer to accept responsibility for the?
Yes.
We can do that?
Yes.
Okay.
And we should, I think. But that's, you know, that's up to you all.
Anything else, Loretta?
So one other question. You talked about if we use COPs, and I know that I'm making Carol's heart stop. There's a three-year window to keep that COP tax exempt. But what if we, what if we found a neighborhood that had less means to pay, and we wanted to give them five years to pay that back? So we spread the assessment out. What's the risk of that? I'm just trying to understand all the mechanisms we have as we try to put the puzzle pieces together.
Yeah, what Kim was referring to as far as the three years, that's to spend the proceeds.
Okay.
So, and typically with a COP, we would have like a 15-year payback period.
Got it. Okay, that helps. Thank you.
But adding on that thread, I think that is, as we've discussed with equity, one of the benefits of doing the COP is you're kind of giving the, the benefit of the county's credit to everyone, so you're borrowing at the lowest rate. But when we form an LID or if we have, you know, PID revenue coming in, when you're setting that mill levy or you're deciding how much they're going to pay back, you have the ability to subsidize with legally available revenue or charge some of them all of it. And I think there's some, some room there as we build out the financing, and, you know, between Jason and Carol, I'm sure they can look at available revenue and see, you know, if you have an LID that comes in that's for a community that has a lot of need, and maybe it's a huge burden, maybe you charge them less on the special assessment, or it's a lower mill levy, but then you are backfilling with the rest of county revenue. But I think that's one of the benefits with the COP, because if they had to go out and borrow on their own, they're standing on their own two legs, they get the credit they do, they got to pay what they got to. If you're using the COP, you're kind of lending the county's credit and other available revenue.
And again, one of the things we've been trying to do is try to, to figure out, you know, kind of a program to kind of batch them together, to kind of minimize the administrative time on the county. And so trying to, you know, pool them to get bigger financings, the county's done very small ones over time. In today's world, if you were to borrow, if an LID was, was to borrow, you know, they're all small, you're borrowing $700,000, a million dollars, you know, you're probably in the 6% to 7% interest rate range, whereas the county would be more for four and a quarter. So it's a pretty significant difference in that, just in the interest rate alone, not to mention just the, the payback period and the other efficiencies of trying to pool them together to get, you know, larger ones. And again, the thought process would be, it could be maybe an annual or an every other year kind of an issuance where neighborhoods could kind of join, so you have, you know, an application process where neighborhoods come in and they can apply and form their districts, and then they could, you know, sign up for the, the county's 2028 COP program or something like that.
Thank you.
There has been some discussion here about COPs and just having the county pay those back from available revenues. And we do have to be a little careful about that, because we aren't allowed to use general fund revenues for roads. So it would be available revenues, but not general fund revenues. And that could be a little bit challenging to identify those revenues.
Thank you, Carol. Thank you, Jason. So we only have a few more minutes. I think the most important thing to bring up at this time is, so where do we go from here? I think in terms of, these meetings are often set up for, quote, "direction," and I think we've provided some level of direction, but perhaps to further clarify that, you know, I think we should explore potentially a legislative proposal that would, at least, if we decided to go down the path of a master PID concept, it would make it easier to, you know, to, to bring in existing PIDs. I think we should keep the idea of a master PID on the table. Further analysis, I suspect you all have done pros and cons, or maybe I was in your slides, but I'm wondering if there are any examples either in Colorado or perhaps around the country where this is really working well. I, I think that requiring future development, they've got to pay their way. I think that's important. And one final thought I'll have, and then we could wrap it up with my colleagues, or Frank, if you have questions or help us to how we move forward. And that is, I seem to recall the last time we talked about this as part of our strategic, one of our objectives in our strategic plan, there was discussion about a, an intentional, proactive education program, you know, to make sure that folks knew, if you're going to start something new, it's, you know, you got to take care of it. So I'm curious if that's been done, and if we have any, any response to how well that's working. That's, I don't know if we have time to answer that, but I think that's important. Yes, Mr. Peterson?
Well, that hasn't gone out in a big way, and part of the challenge there has been, we want to know what we can offer people in terms of addressing their need. And with these subdivisions that have been notified that they're no longer going to receive road and bridge maintenance, because their roads are bad enough, they really then have to have a way to have a pretty significant investment in those roads, which means a local improvement district with a fairly high assessment that currently can only be offered on an individualized basis, which would have high borrowing costs and challenges associated with that. Or they've got to do a public improvement district that would have to have a very high mill levy initially, because they've got to save up a bunch of cash over the next five years. They're sort of, you know, they don't have an immediate way to address their need, and they got to save for it. So they got to let things continue as they are and deteriorate for the next five to seven years, to where they collect enough money to pay cash for what they need to do. So it's really coming up with an idea of what we can offer them in terms of support before we go and do a really proactive mailing to everybody.
Understood. Thank you.
And the last point I would make is we've identified 24 subdivisions that have problems, but there's, of those, you know, other 200 asphalt subdivisions, they're in varying states of decline. And so there are a lot of subdivisions that if it takes, you know, another two to three years to address their need, they're going to roll into that, hey, we need road rehabilitation, fairly significant investments to be made. So it's how do you maintain what you have and prevent it from falling apart and needing a major reconstruction project that's several times more expensive than if you'd been able to maintain it appropriately along its life cycle?
Thank you. Frank, do you have any closing comments in terms of where do we go from here? Any thoughts there?
Thank you, Commissioner. I think just, you know, you guys, obviously, this is a lot of information. I mean, we've, we've tried to package it in a way that's as sort of coherent as possible and lay those options out. I think we can move forward trying to look into hearing from the board about whether you want to pursue those COP options or not. And then we'd have to kind of get the mechanisms in place for that. You know, in terms of other counties, you know, we'll continue to do that. We have reached out to other counties. Lots of other counties have tried a lot of different things and met with sometimes success and sometimes without success. And so, you know, there's not really an easy solution. If there was, I'm sure it'd spread like wildfire across the state. But it's just a difficult thing because of the fact that there's just a limited amount of money to go around. In terms of where we go from here, I think it's good to pursue, looking at some of the master PIDs. It sounds like the board would be interested in at least whether that would be feasible. I think making sure we keep the developers on the hook as they come in for the new subdivisions, and also to pursue some legislative potential changes to allow those master PIDs to be joined more easily. So I think those are all things we can pursue and look into trying to find if those are, with these particular ones especially. So there's sort of the acute needs, and then there's the sort of ongoing problems we need to try to solve. So I don't have any other suggestions than, other than to say, a lot of smart people have been in the room trying to figure this out, and it's just a difficult, difficult problem.
Thank you. Thank you very much for your closing comments. So it's 11:32 a.m. I would like to say thank you to all the folks that are gathered here, our private sector consultant folks, certainly our finance department, our engineering, our county attorney's office, our leadership folks, and the commissioners. This is definitely one of those things that's going to require quite a bit more deliberation, but hopefully we've provided some semblance of, of direction, at least the next couple of steps. We got to, we got to figure this out, because we've been talking about it for a long time. Well, with that, at 11:33 a.m., thank you all. We are adjourned.